All right, good morning, everyone. I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, October 7th.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. You all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have an invocation today that'll be led by Kathy Simes of the Wellsville United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, Kathy, are you on?
I am on.
All right.
Okay, let us pray. Gracious and loving God, there is much work to do, and so we thank you for your presence in the gathering of the people. We pray that as decisions are being made for the citizens of Franklin County, that your presence will be felt. We thank you for these elected officials and for those who have come to voice their concerns and their support. We thank you for all of the work that is done by these great men and women, and we just pray, God, that as we move forward individually and collectively, that we would do so, knowing that all that we do should glorify you as we protect those that are not only that have a voice, but those who are the voiceless. Please keep us safe throughout this pandemic, and God be with us always. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any correspondence organizational business, Derek?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did anybody dial in for public comment? Do we have general public comment?
I don't see the person that signed up for general public comment.
Okay, Dustin doesn't see him either. So, we'll go down to consent agenda, which today would include minutes from our September 30th meeting and our October 5th study session. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottemeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, down to items of business, the first of which would be consider October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I see that Martha and Hannah may be on the call from the Willow Domestic Violence Center. Are you there?
Hi there, yeah.
Anything you'd like?
Oh, sorry, we also have Taylor Jones here. She's the Director of Community Services at the Willow.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at a piece of paper, so I don't have the...
No, that's okay.
Anything you'd like to say before I read the proclamation?
Um, not really. You can go ahead and read it, and I'll probably say something afterwards.
All right, sounds good. The proclamation we're considering today reads, "Whereas twenty million, excuse me, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner, one in three and one in four men will be affected by domestic violence, and between thirty and fifty percent of trans and non-binary folk will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime. Whereas Franklin County places the utmost value upon the health and welfare of all its citizens and striving to provide a safer and healthier community. Whereas domestic violence includes verbal, emotional, economic, sexual, and physical abuse, and all forms of abuse carry long-term physical and mental health implications. Whereas the effects of domestic violence reach far beyond its impacts on survivors and their abusers, causing disruption in community schools, places of work, worship, and neighborhoods. And whereas the effects of COVID-19 have created dangerous situations for survivors in our community and by creating barriers to public service and public spaces. Whereas community engagement and recognition of the costs associated with domestic violence have led to innovative partnerships between local governments and health and wellness organizations, which can significantly raise awareness of the public health effects of domestic violence. Whereas during October 2020, the Willow Domestic Violence Center, working with partnership with local agencies, businesses, organizations, and groups, sponsor and promote Domestic Violence Awareness Month to community-wide attention on survivors and their children, and to promote support of shelters and community programs. Therefore, it resolves that Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designates October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges the community to speak out against domestic and sexual violence, urges its citizens to support and assist survivors of its inane crimes, urges community leaders to hold offenders accountable, and to make prevention efforts a priority by hosting events, creating policies at school and work, and by supporting and participating in programs designated to reduce and eventually eliminate domestic violence as a societal problem. Signed the 7th day, October 2020." All right, back to you ladies, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say thank you for having us here this morning to accept this proclamation, and, you know, there's, we, you know, really appreciate being involved, even with the pandemic going on, and that this is still able to happen in some form. So, also, speaking of, like, pandemic, we appreciate all the community support and partnerships that have stayed strong throughout this and that have helped us to continue helping and working with survivors during this time, because it is a time where we have seen more folks reaching out for services. So, we really appreciate the support in that, and I guess I also just wanted to say that our services are still roughly the same, aside from mostly, like, in-person support groups, but we're still meeting with survivors if they want to meet in person, or if they'd rather meet over the phone and work on stuff, we can do that, we can be really flexible. But basically, just, I just encourage everyone to continue referring folks to us if they have someone, and that's just kind of the same process. You can just call our hotline, and they'll get connected with Franklin County Advocates, Martha or myself. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say that we are having a few, we usually have a lot of events for Domestic Violence Awareness Month to just raise more awareness, and get connected with the community. This year, it looks a little different, and most, all of our events are just virtual. If you go to our website, willadvcenter.org, there is a list of all those events, but some I wanted to kind of highlight, is we're doing a virtual 5K on our Facebook and Instagram. We'll be doing the virtual art gallery, since we usually do an art show this time of year. And then Rachel Louise Snyder, who's the author of No Visible Bruises, will be talking, giving a talk, and Taylor, Director of Community Services, and then Jessica Beeson, our Director of Survivor Services, will be talking with her, and that will be available online to view. So if you go to our website, it will have more details on that. Taylor, Martha, is there anything else you wanted to add? Okay, yeah, we just, oh, go ahead, Taylor.
No, I was just saying that was perfect. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, Taylor, Martha, and Hannah, thank you for everything you do every day, and for the update on what you have going on there at the Domestic Violence Center. Any of the other commissioners like to say anything before we look to make a motion I think we covered it then, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the proclamation that's in front of us, designating October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Taylor, Martha, and Hannah, for being on today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Down to our second item of business, which would be, consider approval of a special use permit application to permit the construction and operation of the 287-foot-high communications tower in an A-1 agriculture zoning district. Larry, this lies with you in planning and zoning. Are you on?
Yes, I am. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've indicated, this is a request for the approval of a special use permit for a 287-foot-high cellular tower. The Planning Commission first heard this matter in August of this year, and there was arguments both for and against this from attorneys representing their clients. The first of those was, there is a tower on the adjacent property to the east, and the, one of the proponents that would be associated with the new tower is currently located on that tower. But the commitment now would be to move to the new tower if the special use permit is approved. After the hearing, this matter on their meeting in August, the staff did take this back and give consideration to the concerns relative to whether our zoning regulations were totally consistent with the statutes that were adopted after our zoning regulations were adopted, and it has to do with the co-location provisions. After reviewing the provisions on the Kansas statutes, along with the requirements that we currently have in our zoning regulations, the staff found that there was enough evidence submitted by the applicants that justify that they have satisfied what we feel are the provisions, both in the statutes and our zoning regulations regarding co-location. The applicants have obviously tried to negotiate new contractual arrangements with the owners of SBA Towers, which owns the adjoining tower where they're currently located, but haven't been able to reach an agreement, and consequently have subscribed to attaching to the new tower if approved. Again, our staff did review very carefully the provisions of the statutes, and we feel that the attempts that they have made, and there's enough evidence on the record that they have done that, to satisfy the requirements that we have currently for co-location. That provision was adopted in our zoning regulations to address the proliferation of a lot of these towers along our major travel routes throughout Franklin County. The Planning Commission felt that there was an impact that associated with having so many towers, everybody wanting a tower for their own purpose, that this was added then as a provision. And we feel, though, that this matter has been satisfied, and that is based on the three findings that I have listed on your staff report, that were reviewed carefully by the Planning Commission in their consideration for the approval of the special use permit. After the two public hearings on this matter, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the application to permit the construction and operation of this 287-foot communication tower, based on the findings and subject to the eight conditions that are attached in the draft resolution that's part of your staff report. I have nothing further to add at this time. My understanding is that there may be an attorney representing SBA Towers that would like to discuss this matter.
All right. Is somebody on representing SBA Towers that'd like to speak?
Nobody's representing the tower, but there is Christopher.
Is there Christopher Sevage on?
I can see him on, Colt. I just, he might be having trouble getting unmuted, maybe, I'm not sure.
All right, we're looking on our side, he's not muted, so...
Can you hear me now?
Now, I can.
Oh, okay, there we go. I apologize for that. As I said earlier, when no one could hear me, my name is Chris Sevage. I'm a lawyer with the Stinson Law Firm in Kansas City, and my client's the SBA Towers entity that owns the tower on the adjacent property. And I'm not looking to take too much of your time today, you know, our arguments, obviously, we've made them before. There are a couple of new facts I'd like to call just to the board's attention on this particular application that bears on whether or not this application does comply with the Franklin County zoning ordinances. The zoning ordinances do require an applicant to make an effort in good faith to co-locate a new antenna on existing towers or other structures, and we understand, and we only learned this during the most recent zoning commission hearing, but we understand that AT&amp;T submitted a letter, I think it's dated September 9th, that indicates that there are economic burdens associated with its lease on the existing tower. And in particular, that letter says that SBA assesses one-time costs and poses unacceptable logistical issues when AT&amp;T replaces or adds new equipment, and that that's the basis for its application here, and my understanding, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that's part of the justification for why the applicant, I think, believes that this new tower should be constructed and why it fits within the Franklin County zoning ordinances. We didn't know that this letter had been submitted as of the last hearing, so I didn't have specific information from my client about the status of those negotiations or sort of the factual background there. What I can now tell you is that although AT&amp;T amended its lease in December 2018, and additional equipment upgrades were completed in 2019 that brought the AT&amp;T service on that tower up to where AT&amp;T wanted it to be, AT&amp;T has not made any attempts since then to propose additional equipment builds, to get future pricing from SBA on what AT&amp;T's intentions would be over the next five or 10 years, or even in the shorter term than that. And in general, AT&amp;T has not requested any further upgrades at all on the tower since the last ones were completed in 2019. And so, we're raising that just, I think, to hammer home the point here, that the ordinance requires an applicant to document that telecommunications equipment can't be accommodated on the existing tower due to one of four factors. And the first three, one, structural capacity, clearly there's structural capacity here, not only because it's already, you know, their equipment's already there, but also because we have additional structural capacity on this tower, we're not close to the limit. Two, RF interference, which is clearly not an issue, because again, the equipment works right now on the tower that it's already on. And the third one is just space on the tower, and again, clearly, that works because it's already there. So, the fourth one is really where this action must be, and that's kind of a catch-all, and it says, "Other reasons make it impractical." The problem for this application is that it's the applicant's burden to show that those other reasons make it impractical, and they can't do that where they've never even come to the table to talk to SBA about this. And so, we would encourage the board to deny the application because they haven't shared any proposals with SBA. They don't know what that rent would be like, even though they're saying it would pose an economic burden on them. They mentioned in this letter that they only do this in limited circumstances, but we know of press releases where AT&amp;T has bragged about relocating more than 600 towers across the country to cut their own costs. This isn't an isolated incident, they haven't given you any reason to think that this new tower is necessary for AT&amp;T to provide coverage. And moreover, SBA is willing to modify lease terms to ensure AT&amp;T's needs are met in a way that's not economically burdensome to AT&amp;T, but AT&amp;T has to come to the table and have those discussions. And so, for all those reasons, we would encourage you to deny this application, and at the end of the day, you know, we think it would be problematic long-term for the county to be in a position where any carrier can get a new tower simply by submitting a letter that says, "We would rather have a new tower than the one that we're currently on." And there's nothing stopping them if this letter from AT&amp;T is enough to satisfy that ordinance. And that's really all I had to say, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board had.
All right. I don't hear any questions right now, Christopher. I'm sure you'll probably remain on the call.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a question for Larry. What is your opinion now with that information, with knowing that AT&amp;T did not attempt to...
Well, our position was that they are currently located, so they are satisfying the co-location provision, and they have, and their letter indicated they have tried to negotiate a new contract, and that because the costs seem to be escalating all the time for the cost of their being able to locate on that tower, they have felt that that would be cheaper for them to go to a new facility rather than to remain at the existing, and we feel that they have satisfied the basic requirements of our zoning regulations, as well as the provisions of the statute. So, that was the position of the Planning Commission, and physically stated in my staff report.
So, hopefully, we can kind of get back towards considering, I guess, the use as opposed to maybe some of the individual operations that SBA Towers and AT&amp;T, you know, their relationship, which maybe is in some small ways, but not entirely pertinent on the use, and necessity of the tower. I do think, you know, Christopher brought up that there's no reason that carriers won't just build a new tower every time they want a new tower, I guess. So, to me, I don't necessarily buy that, because a tower is incredibly expensive, there's a significant cost, time, and investment in doing that. There's always going to be an inherent economy when multiple people are on the same tower. I don't think that it would in any way be fair for our regulations to be used to hold somebody hostage where they have to use the services of one provider. Whether or not AT&amp;T did a lot to negotiate with SBA Towers really doesn't pertain to the use, in my opinion. You know, AT&amp;T clearly has an ongoing relationship with SBA, they're aware what their current costs are, they're aware what it's like to do business with this person, and in a free market, that's not something that we decide for them, so, those are my thoughts. Any other commissioners have any questions for Larry, or anyone, I guess, on the call?
Yeah, that's Commissioner Stottemeyer. The only thing I might say is, the tower deal has been something, you know, we've been dealing with for 20 years now, and really got started about 20 years ago, and every issue kind of dissolves another issue over time, it just, you know, with more towers, more business, and more work. And I think Larry has carried this out to the fullest to make sure that we were doing it properly, doing it right, and that's how I feel about it.
All right, Roy, I heard you start to speak.
Yes, Commissioner Dunn, is, with the new tower, does this make the old tower obsolete, then?
I don't think that it has an impact on the existing tower. In terms of it being obsolete, that is up to the individual providers when they put their service up, and they may all be operating on, what, G4 levels instead of the G5 and so on, because there is a continuum of upgrading their facilities, and each of the providers that provide this service utilize these modifications. I can't tell you how many of those that we've gone through over the last 15 years on existing towers, and I think it's up to the providers of that service as to whether there's obsolescence with the system, Roy. I don't think that it's going to make the tower itself any more or less obsolete than it currently is today.
One other question is, how does this benefit Franklin County, the new tower?
The...
Does that question come up?
Right. That was an issue that was discussed, to some extent, in the public hearings with the Planning Commission, that the service will remain essentially the same service area is going to be applicable regardless of which tower they're on. It's a matter that the time that they're moving this, they're also going to upgrade it to the latest state-of-the-art, which is the 5G, and they feel that they are going to be able to provide that at a lesser cost, so there is a benefit to the community in that they would be paying less for the services that they would otherwise be receiving if they upgraded on the existing tower. So, that was the argument that was made by the applicants for the new tower. They could provide it at a lower cost than what it would be if they had to increase their rent to remain at the existing tower, and then make modifications to the system to upgrade to the better service capabilities.
Commissioner Dunn, again, Larry, was there any opposition from the citizens around there, that would be in proximity of the new tower?
No, we really didn't receive anything there. I think the whole argument was whether or not we fully complied with the provisions of our zoning regulations versus what the statutes required and provide for in terms of co-location, and that's the whole center of the argument here. It had nothing to do with the service, and there certainly was no argument that they did not comply with all the other minimum standards that we have for the construction of towers. So, there wasn't any real discussion or against the location of the new tower.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
This is Derek. I guess, I'm glad you asked that question, Roy, and to be very clear, it's my understanding that the only opposition to this new tower comes from the owners of the existing tower, who, to be very clear, have a major financial interest in this and in keeping AT&amp;T on their current tower. And my understanding is that there's certainly a factual dispute here as to whether or not AT&amp;T, and to what extent, they've tried to negotiate with the owners of the existing tower. as to whether or not AT&amp;T and to what extent they've tried to negotiate with the owners of the existing tower. But irregardless, they've made the determination that the construction of a new tower and moving would be the better long-term financial move. But we're unaware of any other opposition to this outside of the owner of the existing tower. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, good to hear.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Does that mean then that if we approve this, that they still might be able to come to some kind of agreement where the new tower would not be built?
I mean, go ahead, Larry.
I don't think that it would probably change their position. You know, I'm not saying I hate to speak for Unity Towers, but I don't think that they would be in a position where they would want to go back and renegotiate because I think they have already basically signed an agreement with Unity Towers to locate on, and I'm talking about AT&amp;T. I think they've already committed to signing on if this tower is approved.
This is Commissioner Dickinson again. I think all of us understand that as our internet evolves and the services become better, that it's going to require more towers. I think this is probably just a part of being able to bring the internet throughout our counties, so.
Rick, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I agree with what you said. And I think they meet all our requirements in the zoning and so forth. And Larry and the commission has done a lot of looking into this. Derek's been over it. I agree that I don't think we should use that to try to force them to stay where they're at if they don't want to. And they can make a better deal on another tower and can possibly save money for a lot of our county people for their services. So I would be for going ahead and approving this permit.
All right. Well, if anyone else would like to say anything or feels like they need to speak before we look to make a motion, please speak up. In that case, an affirmative motion in support of this item would read as I make a motion to approve special use permit application 2007-1775 to permit the construction operation of a 287-foot high communication tower in an A1 agricultural zoning district based on the findings and subject to the eight conditions listed. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weimar?
Yes.
All right, down to our third item of business, which is to consider approval of a special use permit application 2008-1776 to permit the operation of a micro-distillery with tasting room and drink and food serving facilities in a C2 highway commercial zoning district. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a matter that we have addressed basically when we modified the zoning regulations recently to include provisions for allowing these types of activities, and I'm talking about the distillery, to be operated in the commercial zoning district. However, that was done subject to the approval of a special use permit. So that modification has been adopted to our zoning regulations. And the applicant is now proceeding to get the approval of the special use permit to allow them to move from their current location to the new location up at the corner of Tennessee Road and I-35. And as we've indicated in the past, there have been a number of operations, commercial operations throughout the years in that particular structure. We feel this would be an appropriate use. It is actually in two parts. One is the distillery operation, and that's what we're focusing on that requires the special use permit. However, they also have a tasting room and you are able to buy drinks. But by state law, that requires a certain amount of food service. Those types of activities relative to the drinks and the food serving are permitted by right in the zoning district. So the focus is really on the distillery operation. And after reviewing this, the planning commission felt that it did comply with the provisions of our current zoning regulations. Was consistent with the provisions of our comprehensive plan and met all the policies relative to that. We have reviewed the structure and there will be a few modifications that would be necessary. Those are addressed as the conditions that the planning commission has recommended in their recommendation to you for the approval of the special use permit. And like I said, this has had a lot of discussion on it as we went through the modifications to our rezoning to allow these by approval of special use permit. And we feel that they would be welcome to the community. We did receive comments from joining properties in support of this. And we had no one that appeared at the public hearing opposed to it. So the planning commission does recommend that you approve this based on the findings and subject to the five conditions that are set forth in the draft resolution. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
This is Commissioner Howard. I don't have a question. I just want to say that the owners of this business did come and talk to us quite a while back now when we were still meeting in person. And I myself, I can't speak for everybody else, felt that this was a very good business and be ashamed for this county to lose this business. Be 100% for this permit. So that's all I've got.
I agree with Commissioner Howard. Oh, go ahead.
Say, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I would agree. I think that we've kind of gone, this has been kind of a convoluted process to get here, but it's where we've been wanting to get to. I think that's a great location for that business, much better than where they currently are located. And to have a viable business at that location would be great for the county. So definitely I would be in favor of this.
All right, I agree with what you both just said, so I won't repeat it. If we're ready to make a motion, a motion in support of this item would read as I move to approve special use permit application 2008-1776 to permit the operation of a micro-distillery with tasting room, drink and food serving facilities in a C2 zoning district based on the findings and subject to the five conditions cited in the attached resolution. Is there a motion to that extent?
It's Dunn. I'll make.
All right, Dunn, make a motion.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
I just wanted to say that my vote's not to promote the use of alcohol or not to vote for the use of alcohol, but I vote yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weimar?
Yes. Fourth item is a rezoning application to rezone approximately 22.95 acres from A1 to an A2 zoning district.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request to rezone approximately 23 acres from the A1 agricultural zone to the A2 transitional zone. This is being done primarily for the purpose of refinancing. Originally, the application had been submitted to rezone to the RE. However, after reviewing the site, we needed to include the lagoon system as a part of this parcel so that we would have an onsite sanitation system. And that did increase the size of the parcel, exceeding the maximum for the RE residential state zone. So they went to the A2 zone and the planning commission gave that consideration. We feel that it does comply with the provisions of our comprehensive plan, all the policies that are set forth therein, and did meet the findings of the Supreme Court decision as well as our requirements in our zoning regulations. And the planning commission now has forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezoning from A1 to the A2 and direct staff to modify our zoning maps accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
All right. Let me pull up the affirmative motion and I'll read it. A little behind. All right. Motion in support of this item would be to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2008-1780 to rezone approximately 22.95 acres from A1 zoning district to A2 transitional agriculture zoning district and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly. Is there a motion to that extent?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve.
Commissioner Howard, second.
Commissioner Sotomayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weimar?
Yes.
All right, now the staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, so the county continues its COVID response. You know, there's not a day that goes by that I don't get calls and emails regarding COVID. Same can be said for Casey. Same can be said for Chief Robbins and those in the Health Department. That continues to be at the forefront of our workload. And that continues for obvious reasons to get priority over everything else that we are currently working on. You know, it's been interesting. Nick and I have maintained very close contact throughout this. But something we've been discussing recently, it's a shame that how an individual chooses to, I guess, respond to this pandemic has become such a political issue. Because I will tell you, and we have watched this over the course of the last six months. And every single outbreak that we have had in this county can be traced back to someone who wasn't following a quarantine order or wasn't wearing a mask or wasn't social distancing. And I want to say that just to reiterate to the board, like, this isn't a political statement. It is a fact. Like, we are seeing it at the local level. Like, if you don't do those things, that is how COVID spreads. And that's why it's spreading in this community. That's why it's spreading in the state of Kansas. That's why it's spreading in this country. Like, people just don't want to buy into it. They don't want to listen because it's been politicized. And so I know Nick's been frustrated. I know the Health Department's been frustrated. I'm frustrated with it. And it's hard sometimes to not feel like you're fighting a losing battle. But I will tell you, we will continue for as long as this pandemic lasts. We will continue promoting the things that we know work, and that is mask usage. That is social distancing. That is abiding by quarantine orders when you know you are infected or have been a close contact of someone who has been infected. And so we will continue doing those things. But it is noteworthy and enlightening that we are able to track this at the local level. And certainly, every outbreak we've had, every one, we can trace it back to someone who didn't want to follow what's really a pretty simple set of instructions. And I'll let Nick follow up on other COVID-related updates. Regarding the remodel, the demolition work is underway. So if you are over in the annex, you'll probably be able to hear that, certainly. We've had a lot of questions about what is going on. One issue that came up, and it is barely within my spending authority, but it's close enough that I would ask the board to at least tell me if you have any issues. Soundproofing on that west wall was not included in any of the bids. And I don't know if you've ever been in there, but there are doctor's offices on the other side of that wall. And you can hear what is going on plain as day. And they frequently, I believe, give shots over there. And so to hear children crying is not uncommon. That wall really needs soundproofed. We got two quotes on it. One was for nine grand. One was for 11 grand. I am inclined to approve the $9,000 one so that we can take care of that. But certainly want all of you to be aware, and if you have any issues with that, to let me know. So do any of the five of you have issues with that change order?
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, I think it'd be a good idea to do that.
Okay. Well, then, anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Sotomayor, I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Mr. Howard, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I held my grandson on my lap when he was getting rabies shots. And yeah, soundproofing is a good idea.
Okay. Cole, do you have any thoughts? Okay. A group of county employees, a small group, went up to yesterday. We are looking at how to furnish the remodel. And it's worth mentioning that it is our intention, I mean, we're going to repurpose a lot of existing furniture that we have. And then we are going to try to buy as much used furniture as we can. And so yesterday, a group went up to a used furniture warehouse. And it's incredible, the discounts that you can get on used furniture. I mean, I think the starting point of a negotiation is half of what new furniture costs. So, you know, you look at a set of office furniture, brand new, of any quality, let's just say $8,000. Well, used but refurbished and the furniture is spotless. You know, you look at the starting point as half of that. And then, you know, I don't think it's anything to come down another, you know, 25, 30% off of that. And so we found this company through Casey Brady, our communications director. This is a company that the hospital used for their furniture. OU recently used the same company. And certainly, it's, based on what was seen yesterday, I think it's something that we will recommend for everyone moving forward because it's just, it's nice stuff. And, you know, at least I couldn't perceive, or staff couldn't perceive, that it had ever been used. So hopefully, we're working on putting together a list of everything that we need. But I think we'll end up with a pretty good price on that. And with that, I don't have any other updates and would turn it over to Nick. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Nick. Jumping into COVID response and echoing what Derek said, the biggest Jumping into COVID response and echoing what Derek said, the biggest problem we are continuing to see are people that are not following quarantine orders, people that choose to not fully finish out quarantines. And the other biggest problem that we continue to see is rapid testing. I had a very good conversation today with a physician at Wellsville about rapid testing and what that looks like. The thing with rapid testing, it's wonderful to initially, to initially find out if somebody's positive, but I've said this over and over again, if I'm in the room with somebody that's positive today and I go get tested at a rapid test today, I'm going to be negative. There's, unless I have been exposed five days prior to being in that room, there's no way I will test positive. And these rapid test places, especially the for-profit ones, don't care when you are around a positive. If you walk in there and say, "I want tested," they test you. That creates a major problem. The other thing is, a lot of those places do not report to the state in a timely fashion, so we might get those results 10 to 20 days after that test was done, violating the mandatory four-hour report to the state that they're supposed to be doing. So, with that being said, you probably saw a Facebook post that went out discussing what we will and will not accept, and I want to talk about that for just a second, because I'm sure that you could get questions about it. The first one on that said saliva testing. Saliva PCR testing is not a bad test. There's proof that says it's good, there's proof that says it's bad, but it's a PCR test, and that's what the state asked for. When we have an outbreak in a nursing facility, as we are experiencing right now, the state will not accept a saliva PCR. So that's why that's out there, is the employees or the families of the residents have reached out and said, "We want saliva." State won't accept it. For what's going on at Advent, they use saliva testing for pre-op. That's acceptable, but in an outbreak situation, for employees or residents, it's not acceptable by the state. Secondly, there are rapid testing places that don't do a good job. For example, we have had a situation where somebody was tested at our trailer on a Friday. These people were convinced to go to a rapid on Saturday, that rapid came back negative. On Monday, our test came back positive. So, again, that test was inaccurate. So, we want to be able to evaluate these tests to make sure that they're accurate, that people work with us. OFP has rapid testing now, they're seeing great success with it. We have verified that with PCR testing through the state, and have had 100% accuracy. So, the conversation points are, rapid testing does have a need, but the gold standard is still sending to the state. So if we need to identify a positive, yes, rapid's good, but then we need to make sure we do good contact tracing and we do good timeframes before we test those contacts. So, if you get asked, that is the questions, that is the concerns, and that's what we're seeing. So, as I said, I spoke with a physician at Wellsville today, and they were ecstatic that we are, we do now have that ability within OFP to do some rapid testing. With that, we have signed a contract to get rapid testing through the Health Department. We signed a contract for 900 tests. That contract was accepted, and we should be seeing those shortly, so we should have that ability within our department pretty quick. Following up on that, one of the other things that we have seen is positive individuals playing on sports teams. When that happens, if a positive goes and plays on, unless it's used a football game, that quarantine order goes through the state because our sports team that that positive was on is shut down for 14 days. There's no testing allowed unless they're symptomatic. The other sports team also gets shut down for 14 days. That's the state regulation, that's what we have to do. In the past, because it was within Franklin County, Dr. Ransome and myself had worked on a modified that we've had great success with. But the difference between that and the state is, when the state steps in, it's in other counties as well, so we can't modify that. But within ours, we have had some abilities to do testing on close contacts and hopefully get your kids back into school quicker. So, there has been some conversations about that, and I strongly feel Dr. Ransome and I are on the right page with doing what we can to keep these kids involved in school, because we've seen what it looks like and the test scores and everything of the kids that have been in hybrid classes. So, just to let you know, there has been conversations on that, and we have worked real hard with it. On the quarantine orders, if somebody has got, a family member has COVID, that person has got a 10-day quarantine, and then at that 10 days, if they're symptom-free, they're good, if they're not symptom-free, it's 72 hours following symptoms. Any family members who choose to not be tested or choose not to quarantine from that family member then have an additional 14 days. We've seen multiple times that as soon as that positive becomes out of quarantine, everybody goes about normal activities, and that's been one of the harder things to get people to understand. So, with that being said, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the things that we have dealt with over the last couple of weeks that have been pretty taxing on my staff and the schools, nursing facilities. One thing we do have in our arsenal of testing is antibody testing, and I will tell you, that's been amazing to use on people who have been positive. So, if we have an individual who we know has been positive, and they're exposed in a group or exposed to a positive, we have the opportunity to do an antibody test on them. If they do have antibodies, then it greatly diminishes their quarantine or eliminates the need for that. So, we have used a lot of the resources we have to keep people working, get people in school, and honestly, be as flexible as possible throughout this. With that, we do have currently 94 active positives within our community. Throughout this, we are up to 425 total cases since day one. We have conducted testing in two nursing facilities that did have positive employees throughout their CMS testing that they're required to do. And with those tests, they do an antigen test, so anytime somebody tests positive, they have to be confirmed through a PCR with the state. We did have two people confirm positive. The nursing facilities we're working with, I will tell you, have been great to work with. Alan, Tom, have been great getting those test sites set up for me, the drive-throughs, making sure our new trailer's there, and we continue to learn a lot about that testing. The preliminary testing through one of them really didn't spark a big concern. We did have a couple of positive residents from that, but they had already been in isolation or in the hospital, so I feel that we've contained that very well. With that, I'm open for any questions that you might have for me.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Within light of what has gone on in the last week and the highest levels of our government, I am so proud of Franklin County that our Chief Medical Officer is choosing to stand strong in the light of some negative comments that we have moved forward, I think in the direction that we need to go to keep our residents as safe as we can in this situation. Just proud of all of us, all of the people that are working the front lines of all of this, and continuing to make the right decisions for our citizens.
And if I can, real quick, I do want to also talk about the flu shot clinics that we will be doing, just so you guys are aware. Tomorrow, October 8th, we will be at Williamsburg at the Fire Department. The trailer will be there, will be conducting a drive-through shot clinic from 4:00 to 6:00. October 13th in Pomona, from 4:00 to 6:00 at City Hall. Again, the trailer will be at all of these, and they will be a drive-through style clinic. Richmond at the Fairgrounds on October 20th. October 22nd will be at Wellsville at the Elementary School from 4:00 to 6:00. And then at Forest Park, October 29th, from 3:00 to 6:00. So, those are the big shot clinics we do have lined up for this year. We have conducted a lot of shot clinics so far for flu vaccine at the City of Ottawa, we've been to the jail, we've been to the courthouse, so we are highly encouraging people to get their flu shot this year, and trying to do our best with not having some of the facilities we used to use to get that available to our residents. So, I wanted to make sure you guys knew that.
Great, thank you for the update, Nick. Sheriff Richard, do you have?
Yes, good morning. As I'm sure most of you are aware, if you pay attention to the news at all, there's been a lot of civil unrest around the country, and there seems to be a clash of ideas between certain parts of our society and law enforcement. And as a response to that, Department of Justice has teamed up with several other organizations, to include National Sheriff's Association and the Kansas Sheriff's Association as part of that, and to have what is called a National Faith and Blue Weekend. And that's this coming weekend. There will be events throughout the country to foster building and strengthening relationships between law enforcement and the communities that we serve. We are going to be participating in that here in Franklin County. The Sheriff's Office, along with Wellsville Police and Ottawa Police, have teamed up with Hope Anthem Church to host such an event, basically a community engagement discussion where we can hear from the public some of their concerns and answer questions they have, and we can have the discussion to go the other way as well. So, we have talked with Nick Robbins, and we are following all the recommendations and the guidelines that the Health Department has put out as far as any COVID stuff, so those things are, all those things will be met on our end. And so, that will be Sunday, this Sunday afternoon or evening, starting at 6:00 PM, from 6:00 to 8:00, to be at Hope Anthem Church here in Ottawa. So if any of you are interested in attending that, that is, that's an option that is there. The other thing that I have is that in our building, over here on Beach Street, we have a gun cleaning room, and it's a maintenance room where we work on weapons and other equipment. And we needed some things to be modified in there to make it more user-friendly for us, and I just wanted to say thank you to Brandon and Jason from Maintenance. They came over and were able to do the work for us so that this project, it could have cost us several thousand dollars, I think it ended up costing us like 80-something dollars to get it done, because they were able to do the work, and it looks great, and it's going to benefit us, and we appreciate their willingness to help us out on that. So, that's all I have, unless any of you have questions for me.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Janet?
I'd just like to let you guys know that my office staff is working really hard to get the advanced ballots out the door. We've had a lot of questions about that, and state law says that we cannot start mailing those ballots till October 14th, so those will go out the door next Wednesday. So we've had a lot of questions about that. Also, citizens should be aware that they can check the status of their registration, they can check to see if their advanced ballot application has been accepted, all from votkes.org, which is linked on our webpage. Our webpage also has all the advance, the early voting hours that we'll have open on the Clerk and Elections page, and that is a lot of extra hours. We'll be open four nights until 7:00, and we'll be open three Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00. So lots of extra time to vote. So, I will be on KOFO in the morning discussing those times and additional options for voting for those people who are concerned. Like Derek said, we continue to work on the CARES Act funding, and we'll be submitting our first report to the state today that will include reimbursable items from several small cities and the school districts, so we'll be getting ready to process payments next week to those entities out of our CARES Act funds that we receive from the state. So, lots going on in our office, and yeah, everyone should check out our website for additional information on voting, and they can also view their sample ballot on there. So if they're interested to see what other races are on their ballot other than the presidential candidates, then they should check that out, too.
Early voting in your office?
Yes. If you haven't been into my office, before the primary election, we moved the counter back substantially to make some extra room. We know that last time in the presidential election, we had an overwhelming amount of voters, and we just really didn't have space in the office, so we've created a flow so you can go in one door and out another door, so hopefully to prevent some of the crowding that we may see from early voting. Last presidential election, we had over 2,000 people vote early in the courthouse, and I certainly expect that to be higher this time. So, we're trying to get everything ready here for that, and be ready to go next Wednesday.
This is Commissioner Dickinson.
Go ahead, I am.
Just a quick question, or comment maybe, you can also register to vote on that website also if you have not done that, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely, you can. Just have your driver's license ready, and it'll ask you your driver's license number. It will use that number to verify your identity and pull it in, straight into our system. So yes, definitely go and check your registration, make sure it's up to date, and if it's not, utilize that website also to get it updated. We are working really hard to get all of the registrations updated that we have. We have a lot of people, obviously, coming in and changing their registrations and updating them right now that haven't done that, and so we've got a lot of those working.
And when is the last day to register to vote?
Next Tuesday, the 13th, is the last day to register.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
That was my question, one was the deadline for registering.
Yep. October 13th is the deadline to register to vote, so be sure that you get that done. That eliminates us from having so many provisional ballots at the canvas that you guys have to take a look at. Oh, one other item, we have set the date of the canvas for the election, if you want to get this on your calendar. I did send you guys out an email to let you know, I hope you all saw it. We're planning the canvas to be November 16th, and we're going to do that at 9:00 AM in the morning, it's a Monday, and that's a regular study session day, so hopefully, we won't have anything pressing that we need to review on the study session, because as you guys know, from the last presidential election, it does take quite a little bit of time to get through all the provisionals that we generally have from a presidential election. So, plan to come, obviously, we may have to take a lunch break and resume after lunch, we'll just see how that goes as we get here.
This is Dawn. Janet?
Yes.
Got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't want to add this in on a subject we had earlier, because dollars and cents is always everything, but now that the distillery be relocating outside the city limit, the county will start receiving alcohol tax sales. the city limit, the county will start receiving alcohol tax sales, right?
Yes. And Mr. Klyzes already came by and picked up the paperwork from me to get his county liquor license. So yes, we were down to just the dinner train. We had previously had to, the drinking establishment out at Old 50 in Eisenhower, used to be on our list of alcohol licenses, but they've not been serving there for quite a while. So we, only other liquor license we have is the dinner train that runs between Baldwin and Ottawa. So this will be an additional one that will generate revenue for us.
Thank you.
All right. Good point, Don. Commissioners' comments, board reports. Commissioner Stollmeyer?
I don't have anything today. Everything just kind of been virtual, everything. I did get my notice, but I will, I'm going to try and attend the virtual Governor's Water Conference will be virtual this year, now that I'm on the Middle Merit Design Authority Board. I figure I better try to attend. It is on November the 9th and 10th. And I haven't downloaded it or anything. I don't know if it's a two-day, how much day it is. But if anybody's interested, I could pass on that information. I'm sure Larry has that information also. So that's all I got.
All right. Thanks. Commissioner Dickinson?
I, just a quick report on the city of Ottawa and their study session on Monday. The county manager, or the city administrator, talked about they had two draws from their CARES Act funding, and they were preparing to do another one. And he also gave kudos to the county and to our consultant for being able to answer any questions that they had as they move forward in this process. They also had applied for a grant that was approved that will provide computers that can be checked out for students that need them, that don't have them available. So they were going forward with that funding. The paperwork needed to be in by next week, I think. He also mentioned, and I would agree, that mask trash is kind of becoming a thing. If you go to the parking lot of Price Chopper, or Walmart, or Dollar Tree, you'll see masks on the ground. And if people could just dispose of those properly, those actually are hazardous. And the people that have to deal with them, just, you know, and it's littering. So try to take care of those. I did jump by Public Works yesterday to make a delivery to Jeff Welton, and he happened to be in. And David Lee was there also. It was nice to be able to chat with them in person. And the departments are running very smoothly. It's awesome to see us continue to be able to provide services through COVID. And then the last thing is, children register to vote. My brother turned 65 this year, he's never voted. But this election, he has. And I think it's going to be important that all of us that have the ability to vote should vote in this election. So if you haven't registered, please register. If you are registered, please vote. And that's it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
I don't have anything. I just wanted to ask Derek to give me a call after the meeting, if he would.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
I don't have anything this time.
All right. I have to stop by there. I'll make, and sign some things, where I'll make sure he heard you.
Yep. No, I heard him. Thanks, Don.
Yep. All right. Anything from staff or commissioners before we look to adjourn?
I don't have anything else, Colt. Thank you.
All right. Well, then, if there's nothing else, let's look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Don. Rick, was that you to second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. opposed, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.